Ladies and gentlemen, we are calling to order the regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, City of Jackson, Mississippi, July 16th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. We will have our invocation this morning from my longtime friend Pastor Stanley Smith of Crossroads Missionary Baptist Church in Ward 7, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I am going to ask Mr. Afoot to lead us in this morning. All right, everyone, please stand.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come once more again, Lord God, to ask or to request, Lord God, that you lead us and guide us, Lord God, in decisions and the things that we do here this morning. We ask now that you bless, Lord God, these, our leaders, Lord God, that they might do your will, Lord God, and not just their will. Lord God, we ask that you would just touch out all of those who have brought requests, Lord God, those who have things that they need to know, Lord, and only you know. But, Lord God, put it in our hearts, Lord God, that we are receptive, Lord God, to whatever decisions are, Lord God, for you have given these men and women, Lord God, the authority, Lord God, to lead us and guide us in the way that you would have us to go. Lord, but we put nothing before you. You honor you not with our lips, but with our whole hearts. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Everyone and colleagues, any introductions today? None? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Lee?
I would just like to thank AMR for responding to my home yesterday to help me and my father. They prevented him from entering into cardiac arrest. I would just like to thank Sparkle and Monet for their speedy response when I called 911. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad your father's okay. Anyone else having to announce? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just think, I'd like to thank everyone that came out and participated with our zoo events over the past weekend, especially Parks and Recs Department, Zoo Area Progressive Partnership, and others. Very, very successful day with the Ice Cream Safari and also we had train rides at the zoo. And, look, we're keeping it vital. Folks are coming out and having a good time. We certainly appreciate everyone's participation in.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right. If there are no other introductions from the council, colleagues, I want to go in ahead and take, and I forgot to tell the clerks, so I'm sorry, it's gonna take a minute. But I want to go in ahead and take item number 17, because we have several people here related to that item, and that way we can let them get on back to work. And that is related to the Jackson State Resolution.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi honoring and supporting the Sonic Boom of the South marching band participation in the 136th Tournament of Roses Parade presented by Honda on New Year's Day 2025.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second several times over. So, yes, please come forward. We are so happy you were here. And colleagues, I would like to open it up now for any comments or questions that you may have regarding this item.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
If we could, we have Dr. Lisa Beckley-Roberts and Dr. Rodrick Little here from Jackson State University. They can tell you what their roles are, but yesterday we presented proclamation and a resolution from the council in support of this event. July 19th is a big day. It's a very big day, and I'm gonna ask them to kind of, you know, briefly speak on that. But the Tournament of the Roses Parade is actually one of the top events in this country. The Sonic Boom of the South, which we know as a summa cum laude of bands, I don't see Melissa here, was invited to participate in this parade. They only invite 20 bands internationally. But there's a lot of cost that the university will incur getting those students, those student athletes, to California to participate in this momentous event. And so, the resolution, of course, is for, it's an open call for not only the city, the state, but also the region to come out and support these young people, but also to, you know, let them know that we support them as ambassadors of not only the city of Jackson, but my alma mater also. And so, if you could briefly speak to what's happening and just, you know, let it all out there.
Thank you. And we're so honored that you took time out to come with us.
I am so honored to be here, and I want to start by just saying thank you for all that you all do for this great city. I'm just moved beyond words that we have your support. I'm Dr. Lisa Beckley-Roberts, and I have the distinct honor of serving, and I take that word very seriously, of serving as the Chair of the Department of Music at Jackson State University. And there's an African proverb that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone; but if you want to go far, go together." Jackson State's Sonic Boom of the South is this city's band. It is this state's band, it's this region's band, and further, it is an opportunity to represent Southern culture, HBCU culture, on one of the largest platforms in the nation. I get the opportunity to work with some of the most talented musicians as faculty and students, and absolutely get to advocate for the hardest-working athletes and scholars on the campus of Jackson State University, and that is our members of the Sonic Boom of the South. These students come out and represent the university, represent the city and state. Whenever called, they work tirelessly. They are also amazing scholars who perform in the classroom with as much finesse and style as they do on the field. And so, we want to give the Boom their roses. It is quite expensive for us to go far. It is quite expensive. It will cost about $850,000 to get those students there. And we would like to get them there without asking them to do anything, without asking them to have to worry about anything. And so, for that, we need the help of everyone. We want to go far, we need to go together. And so, on July 19th, we are having a Give the Boom Their Roses Day. This will be an all-day event. You will be able to catch it on all of Jackson State University's Facebook and Instagram pages, as well as the Department of Music and the Sonic Boom of the South social media. We're gonna kick off at 8:30 in the morning, and it's really an opportunity for us to tell our story. It's an opportunity for us to talk about, and have alumni and community members talk about what the Boom has meant to them. Certainly, if you know any members, any alumni of the Sonic Boom, they walk a little differently, they talk a little differently, they make us proud every day. They are movers and shakers and cultural advocates that are working in every type of position in this nation and abroad now. But, so we want to make sure they have an opportunity to talk about the impact that Sonic Boom has had on their lives, but also we want to hear from community members, because they hear us practice every night. We try and make sure we hold that down after a certain time. They see us at parades, they cheer for us as we are riding past and the buses on the way to the game. And so, this will really be a community celebration of the impact of the Sonic Boom of the South. So, we hope you will join us on July 19th. You can join us even before then by going to www.jsums.edu/roses and give. No gift is too small, certainly no gift is too big. We have a long way to go to get there, and we'll have callouts for different classes, for different community affiliates, for different alumni years of the band. We'll get to hear from some of our phenomenal student organizations in the band, and we just ask everyone to join us to give the Boom their roses. And again, I sincerely thank you from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are so. Colleagues, with anyone? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I am one of those individuals that has, for the past 20 years, have gone to sleep listening to the Sonic Boom of the South in my home. And I'd like to thank you for everything you mean to our communities on behalf of Washington Edition, Ms. Felicia McClintock, Pecan Tree Park, we are Dr. Fran Bridges. We are the communities that, right there, we get to hear it all the time, and we certainly appreciate it, and appreciate the recognition, the extension. And on behalf of all members of Ward 5, you guys, you are our home band, and we'd like to thank you, and to see your hard work has paid off, and we certainly want to thank you and support you. And to Dr. Thompson, anything that we can do to make life better, you just let us know, and we'll do that.
So you say Ward 5 is gonna raise the most money, right? I say that we will make a donation, yes. We will be making a donation, yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Listen, I just want to say to Dr. Little, man, I am extremely proud of you. When I came to Jackson State, I had the opportunity to be taught by, Lord have mercy, Dr. Dolly Robinson, who taught my father and mother, and also taught my grandmother. And the Chair of the Music Department at that time was Dr. Jimmy James, who was also the voice of the Sonic Boom. But I want people to understand the rich history and the foundation, because from Dr. Pops Duplessis, you know, to people like Mr. McGruder, Dr. Paul Adams, William Battey, who we lent to Norfolk State to help Norfolk become great, people like Dr. Murray who came through Jackson State, who we lent to Alcorn to help Alcorn become great, y'all throwing my shade. But at the end of the day, you know, you, I watched you really just get under Dr. Dow Taylor. And, you know, people say that, you know, Taylor Made was '93 and before, but you're tailor-made, and now, you know, the foundation that has been set has been set by you, and I'm so proud, because there's a whole lot for us as Boom alumni to brag about, you know. One, I'm proud that the Director of Bands comes from the best drum section in the land, War and Thunder. And the other thing is, you know, from the Super Bowl to actually winning the Battle of the Bands, forget where ESPN said, and all the way to the Rose Bowl Parade, Dr. Little, you have set the standard, and I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor?
First and foremost, good morning to everyone. I had my opportunity to lift you up yesterday, so I just reminding you that, you know, not only is all of Jackson behind you, but as you go to Pasadena, understand that we're all with you in spirit, and we love the ambassadors that you are for our city, and know that it will be a wonderful representation. Thank y'all.
Thank you, and thank you so much for being with us here today. We are grateful that you took the time out to come and tell us about this exciting fundraiser that sounds very well organized, and I will be checking it out myself. So, thank y'all very much.
Now, Madam President, before you call for the vote, I just want to let you know, and you would really appreciate this, Dr. B. Robb is an acclaimed harpist.
Oh, man. No kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that is such a, that's wonderful.
She's wonderful.
Yes, thank you. Well, Jackson State has so much talent, and I have lots of stories of my own to talk about the time that I've spent in the Music Department at Jackson State, but I'm always in awe of what you do there as the professors, but also what your students accomplish, and it's really remarkable. So, thank you. All right, with that, colleagues, all in favor? I think you got a 6-0 vote. Yeah, well, Mr. Stokes sadly is not well today, or he would be, I'm sure he's voting with both hands, so there we go. Thank you. All right, colleagues, we now have a public hearing before us, so we're gonna go back to item number two.
Order finally approving the Department of Revenue's Uniform Assessment Schedule for Ad Valorem Taxes on Motor Vehicles After No Complaints Were File in Writing, Objecting To and Petitioning to Any Portion of the Assessment Schedule.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this item? All right, colleagues, let's go in ahead and take up item number seven while we're here at this place. If the clerk would get it on the floor.
Order finally approving the Department of Revenue's Uniform Assessment Schedule for Ad Valorem Taxes on Motor Vehicles After No Complaints Were File in Writing, Objecting To and Petitioning to Any Portion of the Assessment Schedule.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? We've had some discussion about it last week, and then again, it worked this one yesterday. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. Now, colleagues, we are going to go back to the agenda, and we are going to do public comments, and we have several, again, today. If I can, I'm gonna start with the item that's related to an agenda item. Mr. Lee Bernard is here to discuss with us item number 23. As he's coming to the podium, I would like to remind everybody that this is three minutes. The clerk will kindly give you prompts when you've got just a few seconds left, and then when your time is finally up, and I ask that you kindly respect that. And colleagues, I'm gonna also ask that unless it's really pressing, we listen to the people, we refer them to who they need to go to, but that we don't have elaborate editorializing on each item. So, Mr. Bernard, would you please begin?
Thank you. Again, my name is Lee Bernard, Mr. Mayor and Council. Came to speak on item number 23 on behalf of Brookwood Subdivision. And what we want to speak on is that the fact that when you're coming off of Lakeshore onto Forest Hill Road, we always have issues, because it's hard to see when you're turning the curve. Even coming out of the neighborhood, out of Brookwood, you try to make that left turn, there's always trash and limbs there. We had one of our members of the association to come out and clean that up, but we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we do have those issues when Lakeshore hits Forest Hill, and you take a left or right, it's hard to see. And then, while I'm speaking on Brookwood, if you come into Brookwood Subdivision, we have two bridges where two creeks run through Brookwood, and both of those bridges are about to fall in. We need someone to help us on that also. And if that first bridge fall in, just before you get to Brookwood, before you get to Brookwood Place or so, the residents that live in that part of Brookwood won't be able to get out. And to us, that's very important, that a lot of times when it floods coming through that creek, you can't leave the neighborhood. So, we need some help on that end of Brookwood. And again, we thank you, and our President here, Mr. Armstrong, if he had anything he wanted to add, because I'm sure I only used about a minute. So, Mr. Armstrong, would you stand? And he's the President of Brookwood, and I just work with the Board in Brookwood. If you had anything you want to add to what I said.
Well, sir, if you're going to speak, you're gonna need to come to the microphone and state your name, but we really are about out of time. How many? Yes, Mr.? And I was gonna ask you, Mr. Mayor, is there a direction we should go with this?
Yeah, so Councilman Banks brought this up a while ago, and we've been talking about this. This goes along with the contractual agreements that Lakeisha Weathers is trying to work out. We've been talking about trying to see how we can execute this on an emergency basis, so it isn't forgotten, just a bit delayed as we try to work through the details of that. So, we're trying to do that. I will report this bridge issue to Bridges and Drainage. Bridges are usually inspected. I'll see what the issue is with that, and it's not inspected by the city.
Yeah, I'll give clarity to it once, Mr. Armstrong, and then we can mark Discussion Item 22 done.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay. Please state your name for the question.
Okay, my name is Larry Armstrong. I am the President of Brooklyn Home Owners Association. Thank you so much for giving us this amount of time. I was actually not prepared for a public conversation, but, on this particular issue, but I want to basically discuss with you, to kind of dovetail into what he was speaking about. Those bridges, the neighborhood, I mean, we're working really hard to keep our neighborhood where it needs to be, and we basically need your assistance in that. Basically, we need your assistance in speaking to the bridges, speaking to the cleanup around that area, limbs overhanging the areas, not being able to see stop signs, not being able to have proper signage in the area, and also looking specifically at how we monitor and push our neighborhood to stay clean. You know, I think that's one of our biggest pieces. Actually, we need your help in that. We need your help to make sure that happens. So, thank you so much for that. Mr. Bernard did cover the bridges and cover the areas at Lakeshore and at Forest Hill. Also, they're utilizing the area as a drop zone for everything. We have tires, we have all kinds of other things that are there, present. So, we basically need your assistance to get it cleaned up as well. So, if you can help us with that, we'd really appreciate it.
One last addition.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
With respect to the dumping, one of the things that I'm grateful Chief Wade has implemented, he actually has a, not only a neighborhood enhancement, but he has a division that is specifically geared towards illegal dumping, and so they're doing investigations on that. And so, we've caught a few people, you know, we want to make certain that we make examples of those that we catch.
Yes, sir.
In hopes that it is a deterrent towards their continued dumping, but we'll look at that area as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Bernard, for coming. Madam President, there are several bridges. The first bridge is, of course, on Forest Hill Road itself. That bridge has been, you know, repaired, but the problem is, is the limbs and the trees that are growing out of, from around, that blocks the view of people turning out of Brookwood and people that are coming. The second thing is, at the stop sign on Forest Hill Road and Lakeshore, even though you may cut the grass around, and, you know, Lakeisha has done all she can, but then also we have had community members, Justin Green and some of the others, to come out and cut, you still can't see. You have to pull all the way out into Forest Hill Road, because it curves. So, yet, so there are bushes that are maybe 20 feet back that obstructs the view. And the reason why this is so important, because we had over eight wrecks now in the past year. One of those include my daughter. This is when I first started highlighting, because she was coming up, and the guy was out on Forest Hill Road, and she had to verbo and actually flipped over in somebody else's backyard. And so, it is extremely dangerous. The other creeks are in the back of the neighborhood and have not received the attention, because it was under county maintenance before annexation in 2009. And then, we know the issue with B&amp;G Utility that handled that, and I believe our residents, community members are still getting billed by B&amp;G Utility. So, you know, for years, Drew, we have talked about the legal issues with them not doing their part as far as that, but at the end of the day, they're citizens of Jackson. Those bridges are falling in, those bridges are in danger. Every time it floods, it floods houses in that community. And so, at the end of the day, if we can get some attention, I don't know if we can spray, cut those limbs, but anything that obstructs the view, especially in that area, because I think that is one of the most wooded areas in the city of Jackson, because the trees meet like this, it will help out. And so, the major concern is the obstruction of view for traffic and the amount of wrecks that have happened right there. And just want to also give shouts out to Mr. Justin Green, because on the left side, he went down in that creek himself and cut those trees just to keep people, you know, from having wrecks. So, if we can address that and, you know, get some eyes on that, and get somebody all the way to the back, I'm sure Mr. Bernard, he stays all the way back there, can help show you all those areas. And with that, Madam President, we can add, we can mark Discussion Item 23.
Thank you so much, Mr. Banks. And so, colleagues, we have dealt with item number 23, but I want to thank you both for coming before us today, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your attention to this.
Mr. Armstrong, I appreciate that vibrant color that you're wearing right there. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, no, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right, colleagues, we have, thank y'all. We have six, nine? I'm sorry?
I just had one more comment that I would like to make. Would like to thank Mr. Vernon Hartley. He has a radio show, and he gives out a lot of numbers that are very important, and would like to ask him or the city to send all those numbers to all the neighborhoods in Jackson, because we really need those numbers, and I appreciate your show. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, we now are going to non-agenda items and public comment, and we have six speakers today, and I think two of them are really as one, maybe. And so, I am going to allow all six, even though the ordinance says we can cap it at five today. And so, first is Patrick, again, three minutes, and please, I ask you to please be kindly respectful of that. The first is Patrick Cruz at 1439 Riverwood Drive, and this is regarding a large sinkhole. Mr. Cruz?
I don't know if he's here. I don't believe it's Peter.
Okay. Gregory Williams. Gregory Williams, Fontaine Avenue, talk about flooding.
He's not here.
Is this an old list? It's not, it's not an, okay. Abba Beth Bremen. Oh, Abby Bremen, I'm sorry. Hello? I didn't know it was Abby Beth, so thank you. All right, and she is here to talk about Pearl River Flooding Project. Three minutes, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Abby Bremen, Executive Director of Pearl River Keeper. Thank you for the time. The Army Corps of Engineers released its Pearl River Flood Risk Management Planning Document last month and has held two public meetings in Jackson. Many of your constituents attended the meetings and expressed serious concerns that the proposed project alternatives would not help their flooding. Only one person, a Richland developer, spoke in favor of the Corps' project plans at the Jackson afternoon meeting. Alternative D is a plan to dredge and dam the river through Jackson. Alternative D's channel improvement and lake shifts the flood risks away from central Jackson and Flowood and towards federally designated disadvantaged communities along the tributaries, South Jackson, and Richland. Improved river conveyance through central Jackson forces more water on communities downstream of the project area, inducing flooding that will cover 38,000 acres and be felt as far downstream as Byram. The Corps predicts that South Jackson residents who live along the river and along Katy and Hardy Greeks will experience up to six inches of additional flooding caused by Alternative D. The induced flooding is so severe that the Corps is offering some residents who live in South Jackson compensation in the form of elevations, floodproofing, and voluntary buyouts. Our canvassing efforts reveal that the Corps has not contacted those South Jackson residents about this plan. The Corps says that the dam included in Alternative D does not provide flood control, but will create a recreational lake for development opportunities. This new lake will keep the water permanently six feet higher than current levels, which will impede flow and backup water in the tributaries. So, many of your constituents living in disadvantaged communities along Lynch Creek and other Jackson urban creeks already experienced frequent and devastating flash flooding events, like the ones that plagued Jim Hill High School and Asable Elementary. Early Corps documents and communications included multiple plans to address flood damage along Jackson's tributaries. That included plans to clean out and maintain the channels and provide floodproofing and building elevations to homes and businesses as far west as the Jane Avenue neighborhood. These tributaries' plans were not included in the document released last month. The Corps wrote that tributary flooding will be the responsibility of the city of Jackson and other entities. As you know, the city has only a fraction of the budget and engineering support that the Corps has at its disposal. Instead of budgeting money to help the tributaries, the Corps budgets $500 to $650 million for Alternative D, a certificate percentage of which will be spent not on flood control, but on expensive new recreational lake and dam. This is a grossly unfair distribution of resources. Pearl River Keeper urges you to examine the Corps' plan to build a lake in Jackson and ask the Corps to instead prioritize flood risk management instead of recreational development opportunities. The Corps' public comment period ends August 6th, and they expect to make their final decision in December.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bremen, for being with us here today. All right, colleagues, we appreciate all that you're staying on top of this. All right? Thank you. Councilwoman Lee?
Where can we go to provide the public comment?
So, the Corps will be happy to provide all the information to you, but the Corps has a website. It's the Pearl River Flood Risk Management, Army Corps of Engineer website, and I will send that to all of you, and that's where you make your public comment.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just want to thank you for being here and for that presentation, and you absolutely. And you absolutely correct. We have severe problems, not just in South Jackson, but that Lynch Creek corridor. And we have, every year, we have backup. And now, they're looking at six inches more. That's going to be a tremendous problem for our areas. You mentioned Jane Avenue, Lynch Creek, Jim Hill High School, all along that Lynch Creek area drainage system, we have problems. So, thank you for staying on top of this. And we, County Park and other neighborhoods within my area will be submitting their flood concerns to that Corps report.
Very important. Thank you. And thank you. All right, colleagues, we now have before us Michael Gray Lewis, follow-up on drainage issues. As you recall, Mr. Lewis came before us at the last city council meeting. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. My name is Michael Gray Lewis. And first, let me just mention, any meeting that starts off with talking about the sonic boom is always a great meeting. But anyway, I reside in the Rollingwood subdivision located in northeast Jackson in Ward 1, and I'm representing the residents of Rollingwood, some of which are here today, Mr. Marcus Berger, Mr. Flood, Ms. Flood, and their new young child, Nellie. So, they were able to make it here today, and I appreciate their efforts. I wanted to update you all on the progress of the stormwater drainage repairs so far in our subdivision and to also express my sincerest gratitude to you all for your willingness to help the residents of our subdivision. Thank you. As of 9:00 AM this morning, Delta Constructors had four labors on site and were in the preliminary fairs of clearing the overgrowth located along Yucca Creek. I also spoke with the superintendent on site to inquire about the project duration. According to the superintendent, there is no set completion date due to scheduling conflicts between the general contractor and other subcontractors. This specific issue raises a lot of concerns. We have entered the second month of hurricane season in Mississippi. Most hurricanes are reduced to a tropical storm by the time they reach Jackson. However, we all know that how much rain a tropical storm can bring. A storm event like this could easily overwhelm an already compromised drainage system such as ours and promote even more extensive and unnecessary flooding. It is my hope that the improvements to the Rollingwood subdivision stormwater drainage system can be evaluated and improved before the winter rains begin in November. Once the winter rains begin, not only will our current issue be exacerbated, I believe these types of improvements will be extremely difficult to undertake during this time. As a result, the citizens of Rollingwood could have to wait until the spring or summer until 2025, until we finally see repairs. As I've mentioned, the sinkhole located along Yucca is only a symptom of a much larger problem, and there's evidence that sinkholes, such as the one located on Yucca, will begin to appear more frequently. For instance, the property located directly behind the sinkhole on Yucca, the residents of Albert McGowan, will then become the bottleneck for proper stormwater drainage and will soon resemble the existing sinkhole currently located on Yucca, which is under repairs at the moment. Therefore, while equipment and personnel are already on site, I believe it would be prudent to go ahead and evaluate the repairs and evaluate and repair the remaining stormwater culvert at this time so that we are no longer treating the symptoms, but rather the issue as a whole. Thank you again on behalf of the property owners of the Rollingwood subdivision and allowing me this platform to speak with you all. Any questions?
Thank you. We don't really allow questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But thank you again for coming back before us today and bringing this to our attention, and we appreciate your gratitude. And I'm sure the mayor and his team will take your serious requests seriously. So, thank you. All right. Thank you. All right, now, now we have Dr. Lucille Green, who is here to speak to us about overgrown and abandoned houses. Overgrown and abandoned houses. And please state your-
Good morning. Good morning to the mayor and to the-
Yes, ma'am. And please state your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Lucille Green, Jackson, Mississippi, over 60 years. I actually moved in Jackson in August of 1960. On August the 14th, I remember it so well because I married Mr. Green, and we located in Jackson, Mississippi. So, I've been here. I've seen a lot. I live, I live now in South Jackson, but I'm here speaking on behalf of a property that I own in North Jackson. It is located, my property that I own and rent is located at 131 Woodsea, W-O-O-D-S-I-A Lane. And the property that I'm concerned about is right next door to it, and it's overgrown, and it's located at 135 Woodsea Lane. And I promise you all, I've been calling-
I'm sorry, can you give us that address one more time?
One, the one that I'm concerned about?
Yes.
135 Woodsea, W-O-O-D-S-I-A Lane. It's next door to me, to my rental property. And I have called there, I promise you, I've called, and thank Miss Dora for me. She's always so kind when I talk to her. And we have tried to get home, I mean, community improvement, to go out there, just to look at it. And, I mean, I hadn't even gotten, but they wouldn't even return my call for the last, I've done this over two years, I'm so sorry, trying to do the right thing. And nobody won't call me. All I want you to do is go out there and look at that overgr- I mean, the grass has grown up to the top of the house, and it has three vehicles parked in the driveway. I complained because they were on the street. Well, they took them off the street and put them in the driveway. And it is, it looks bad because I own my property and I take pride in my little house. When I lived in it, it was my little mansion. And I treat my tenants kind. I'm not one of those folks who don't care. I take care of my yard, and that's ISO next door. So, I'm concerned about the ISO. All I want you to do, go out there and see it. I think when you see it, you'll see my concern. And I'm not one of those citizens that gonna call three on my side and embarrass nobody because I'd be embarrassing myself. I care about Jackson. I live here. And whatever Jackson is, I'm a part of Jackson. So, I'm not going to embarrass you because I'll embarrass me. So, I want somebody to just go and have a look and see, can you find, I just found this person, and have them do something about that rundown property. That's all I want.
All right. Ms. Green, I assure you that I will not only talk to constituent services, but I will follow up with planning and development and see if they've initiated a case. If not, what needs to be done to initiate a environmental court matter on this case.
That's all I can ask you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we are grateful you came before us, and thank you for being-
Thank you so much.
-a faithful citizen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Pastor Mark, I'm sorry. Walker, Mark Walker of Cherry Grove Baptist Church. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, good morning. My name is Dr. Mark Walker, Pastor, Cherry Grove Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you for allowing me to stand. Good to see you, Mayor Lumumba, President Banks, President Lindsay, to the entire council, you brothers and sisters. Here standing on behalf of our church, as well as the Georgetown community, on Martin Luther King, right in front of a church called Cornerstone Baptist Church. It's a thoroughfare on Martin Luther King that goes right directly in front of our church, Cherry Grove. There was a bridge, and it looks like there was some work started. It's a huge heap of dirt, and it's just blocking the entire drive. And we're just coming to see if there's any way possible, anything can be done urgently to finish the work. It looked like it had started, but has stopped because that is a major thoroughfare on Martin Luther King.
Are we talking about the bridge right by, right by Cornerstone? Is this the one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, right in front of Dr. William, PJ Williams Church.
Okay. I know IMS, who's looking at a lot of our stormwater issues. I know that they had a quick observation of it. Do you have any update on any of that, Louis?
Louis Roy, CAO. The design work has been completed, and we're getting ready to bid the contract out to get the work started. The dirt was put there to keep people from going across the bridge because it's a dangerous bridge. And as a result of that, we just wanted to keep people from driving across it. So, work will start in just the next several weeks in terms of completing that.
Awesome. Sounds good. All right. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We love it when it works out that way.
Yes, amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Mark, Walker, could you just let everybody know who you play football for?
Oh, no doubt about it. Jackson State University. Amen.
I know last time, it's been a while since I came to your church, you had some of the Currys there. Are they still there?
Still there.
Okay. Tell David I said hello.
Yes, sir. Minister Curry's still with us, here and away.
All right.
All right. Bless y'all. Thank y'all. Good to see you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, that concludes our public comments for the day. We're going now to the consent agenda.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harley?
Yes, just one final thing. If we could have someone from your office to contact Reverend PJ over in that same area and give him an update on that as well, because he had those concerns as well.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on now to the consent agenda. Clerk?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. I'm assuming there's no need to pull. You've got, you have a question, mister, but do we need to pull this item out of the consent agenda?
There is no consent agenda.
There is, there's the amendments.
Well, I just, I turned to page three and I don't see it.
It's the minute.
It's, it's, it's four.
Where?
Page four. It's a real thick.
I don't think it still works with the old.
It's the minutes.
Okay, the minutes. Okay, all right. I mean, I just, I looked where, I thought it was and-
Okay, I know it's, and we got it late. We got it late. So, I'm sorry there was confusion on that. All right, colleagues, are any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Not all in favor? Okay, moving on. We don't have any ordinances today. We're moving to the regular agenda. I'm sorry.
You got the vote?
Oh, it was 6-0, sorry. All right, claims. But before we go to claims, we've got to do item eight. But colleagues, before we do that, we do have an emergency item, and it seems fitting to go ahead and take it up while we just finished talking about drainage in public comments, and there are so many public works issues in public comments. So, I want to go ahead and take this up. As I understand it, colleagues, you should have, you each should have a copy of the emergency item, do you? Okay. And just for quick clarification, before we vote on whether or not to add it to the agenda, this is a really dangerous situation. We are in hurricane season. If we have a major rain, this tree that is clogging up a drainage area could cause major problems in the Magnolias neighborhood. And so, with that, I would entertain a motion to add this to the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add it to the agenda. All in favor? Thank you, colleagues. It's a vote of 6-0, and that is what we need to get this on the agenda. Clerk, would you please read it?
Order accepting the quote of professional-grade lawn services, LSC, for removal of a tree from a city drainage easement located at 409 Glen Rose Drive and for disposal of the tree.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you, colleagues, and I'm sure the neighborhood thanks you too. All right, now, we're moving on to the regular agenda with claims, but we want to first, I believe, take up item eight. Because it needs to be considered before claims, as I understand it. All right? Clerk?
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with RISDBA Edward J. Pierre III for professional IT services to support the enterprise resource planning system.
Move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. We did have a good bit of discussion about it at that work session yesterday. Colleagues, are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Mr. Banks, did you?
I voted.
Okay, it's, okay, so it carries with a vote of 6-0. All right. Now, we're going back to claims, colleagues, and that's item five.
Order proving claims appearing at pages 1 and 522 inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $2,577,502.29 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. Yes?
I don't know if you got the note that, related to claims and item eight, the invoices that Councilman Foote was asking about yesterday for Mr. Pierre need to be amended. The claims docket has to be amended to put those on there.
Okay.
The invoices are on the way, I understand, from Finance.
So, they, it's not already on the-
It's not. It's, I have the total of the invoices, but I don't have the invoices with me.
Okay, and I am going to respectfully request, for my own sanity, that this kind of thing, if it's common, I need to know about it before we're sitting in the meeting.
Agreed. I just learned about it as well.
I know it's, I know, you're just the, you're the messenger. It is, it just makes for a smoother meeting. I really need to know this during work session, if at all possible. Thank you. All right?
Making the motion.
Mr. Banks?
I guess at this point, we just withdraw the-
We don't, we don't have the, we don't have the invoice.
It ain't ready.
I withdraw my motion.
We do have them now, apparently.
We'll do claims later. Who made the second?
Louis has the-
Mr. Wright has the invoices now.
Yeah, but we don't.
Apparently.
Give it to the clerk first.
I just don't like this kind of chaos in a meeting.
Let's take a claim.
All right, so, what do we, what do you recommend we do? Do we come back to this later?
Yeah, just do it to give me a-
Let's give everybody a chance. All right, she withdrew her motion. Mr. Banks, you made the second.
I think I did. I withdraw my second.
All right, we're going to come back to claims later. All right, now, we'll move on to payroll, item number six.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 304772, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. It's a vote of 6-0. Item number seven, we've done. Item number eight, we've done. Item number nine.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute contract execution, mentor compensation, camp assistant compensation, workshop presenter compensation, and funds to transfer for Film Jackson Youth Summer Camp.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Banks made the second. We have a, I think, was it, was it, who made the second?
Mr. Brazil.
Mr. Brazil.
It was me. I made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. You got it. All right, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I was trying to do it myself and I got confused. All right, so we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? All right, six zero. Item number 10.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the Jackson Police Department and the Mississippi Internal General's Office.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Just...
Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just to comment, I think, from our discussion and work session, I think it's a very good thing for our crime-fighting efforts. Could you, just briefly, I'm sorry to take up time.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about, about this program.
Yes, the Wendell Watts, Assistant Chief, Police Department. What the program is, is internet crimes against children. Or back, a few weeks back, we had a bit came on from Louisiana that kind of brought our attention to the issues dealing with children. This deals with also internet crimes, gets us in with the state. We're also going to be working with federal partners on this, so we're hoping to make a major impact on it.
Including human trafficking?
Yes.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Six zero. Thank you. Item number 11.
Order authorizing the mayor to ratify the submission of the City of Jackson's application and acceptance of the FY 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant into entering to interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Jackson, Mississippi, Jackson Police Department, and Hines County, Mississippi, to utilize JAG grant refunds to purchase equipment and patrol vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Thank you, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Item number, oh, six zero. Item 12.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Red Laser Technology, Inc., to perform a cybersecurity assessment and provide best practices and training to personnel of the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none? All in favor? It's six zero. Thank you. Item number 13.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Red Moon Lawn and Cleaning Service LLC for city right-of-way maintenance services.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, and we had some discussion yesterday during work session. Colleagues, are there any other questions or comments about this item? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed?
Stay.
Okay, so we had four in favor, one opposed, and one abstained.
Hold on, hold on. Give that count again?
Oh, who did? I'm sorry.
If you could repeat the counting.
Did we have four in favor?
Oh, I just...
No, we didn't.
I didn't hear your count.
I thought we had four in favor. Did we not?
There's three.
Four in favor. Mr. Foot was in opposition, and Mr. Hartley abstained. Oh, you abstained, so we, okay.
Three in favor.
So three in favor, so it doesn't pass.
Can, can I...
You abstained, okay.
Because of voting. Madam President...
Yes, sir, Mr. Banks.
I know the mayor wants to make some comment, and I would make some, based on the outcome of vote, I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider. All in favor? Motion fails to reconsider.
It passed, didn't it?
No.
No, it didn't. It didn't. And this is the entire, this is the conversation that we had about taking care of rightaways.
All right, Mr. Mayor, there is nothing on the floor. Let us get item number 14 on the floor, and then we'll have discussion then, okay? I'm asking, because it's related.
Okay.
All right, item 14.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with PDT Logistics LLC for mowing and grounds maintenance within the City of Jackson cemeteries.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to consider this item. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, these contracts, not only this one, but the one previous, come on the heels of work that Lakeisha Weathers has been doing in order to help mitigate the challenges that we have with lawn services. She engaged with these companies. She got pricing from these companies. We're looking at a bigger footprint and working with more private contractors across the city so that we can make certain that we keep up the aesthetic appeal. PDT, as an example, just carried by the news the other day, took it on their own behalf to cut some of our cemeteries for free in order to help mitigate the challenge. It was a very good news story that they were taking out this expense on their own, paying their workforce to do this. And, you know, them, along with the company that was not considered previous, this is something we need. We're going to get into budget season. We're going to be talking about the lawn that isn't cut. This is helping us, and we sorely, sorely need this. And so I implore you to not only consider this contract, but if we can get to a point where we consider the previous one, we all need this. Everybody up here in the residence collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot.
Thank you. Was this put out, this is about a figure, the way I figured, is about $75,000 contract. Was it based on, I think it's $33,000 a month through the end of September? Was this put out for bid?
Ms. Weathers can come.
Lakeisha Weathers, Solid Waste. This contract was not put out for bid. However, this is a short-term solution based on the outcry from the June 4 meeting that we had from all the residents that came and spoke about their concerns with the cutting in the cemeteries. So this is a short-term contract that will run through September. In the meantime, we are putting out a RFQ, tear, tear gone, an RFQ for request for qualifications to secure a long-term contract. That way, we can qualify the companies that we are intending to contract with long-term.
And a clarification on the bid process. This contract is under $75,000, so it does not require a bid and its professional services.
That is correct.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just want to implore my colleagues as we look at these items. When we set the budget last year, one of our biggest concerns was right-of-way cut. I think it has been made clear to us, the shortage of manpower. And as we talk about the obstruction of view of traffic, but then as we also put, talk about putting Jacksonians to work. You have PDT, who is a company out of South Jackson. You have the Redmond, which is a family that grew up in West Jackson, you know, that are trying their best to help us when it comes to these issues. And so at the end of the day, we're going to end up with an issue where there's overgrown rightaways, and it's hypocritical for us to come in and then jump down the administration's throat when they try to provide a solution. They have told us that there's a shortage of manpower, and so I don't know no other way to get it done. You know, whatever other grievances, I ask that we lay that aside so that these people can get to work and service the City of Jackson so that it can look clean. I think it's not right if on one end, we say we want our city to look clean, we tired of overgrown this and overgrown that, and then when we have the opportunity to get a cut, we vote it down. So, you know, I hope that we can pass this one, and hopefully legal can advise us. I think we did one reconsideration. If the vote is there to do another one, I would implore that we do that because this work needs to be done. Most of this work ain't even in my ward, but it needs to be done. All right.
And I will simply say that one of the main cemeteries that's on a discussion is Cedar Lawn. Please understand, Cedar Lawn Cemetery is 83 acres by itself, okay? There's no way with the staff that we have in-house that that cemetery can be cut and maintained. Jim Hill Cemetery is large. It holds water, okay? There's no way to maintain these facilities. Greenwood, I believe, is around 40-some, 50-some acres. So this, that's a lot of acreage to cover for internal staffing. Right-of-way, you got over 300 miles of right-of-way to cut. That's not including the city-owned lots in the city. By my last count, it was 700 that we have to cut, okay? So there is no way with the staff that you have in-house that you can keep up with that. Now, I do understand the concerns, but as I stated, we had the discussion with legal about going forward with a long-term contract, but there's no way we can do the cutting in-house with what we have.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I don't think there's anybody on this council who's against getting these things done, especially over my ward. We got overgrown cemeteries, we got rightaways, and these things didn't just happen.
No, they didn't.
They have been ongoing lack of maintenance. And then we pull out this card once a year and say, this is the way we got to do it. And I'm curious, what is legal advising us for us, you know, for us going forward? Is it, is it within the laws? Is it within our procurement laws? I just want, that's just one answer, yes or no? That's all. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So my concern, though, my concern is, we can't wait till something becomes an emergency and then throw out, well, this is, this is the solution that we decide to go with. We have to, in this city, we have to maintain our personnel. We have to continue to get those personnels. We have to work these issues, drainage issues, right-of-way issues, cemetery issues, every single week. And we, you know, and I talk to a lot of folks, they're just tired of the excuses for daily, monthly, weekly maintenance.
But we block it.
And then we come up, and then the first thing you say is, oh, you don't want the grass cut. No, I want the grass cut. I wanted it cut last month. I wanted it cut the month before, and the month before, and the month before. And we keep bringing these things up, and then all of a sudden, wow, this is our solution, and we're going to do it in this way, and if you don't vote, then you are anti-getting the grass cut. I hate that representation. Because it's not true.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
I will simply say, Count, President, Ms. Lindsay, I will simply say that since October, I cannot speak to what happened prior to me managing this department. I can only speak to what I received. What I received was eight employees. So I can only speak to that. And this is not a all-of-a-sudden contract that we just threw out there and say, hey, pick this. This is a short-term solution to a big problem in the City of Jackson, okay? I did not deplete the department. I did not remove the positions. I am going with what I have, which is eight employees. Three for cemeteries, the others are for right-of-way, okay? And we are having long-term discussions about how to resolve these issues.
Madam President.
We are having long-term discussions about how to resolve these issues. I have had many discussions with Mr. Wright on staffing, on equipment purchases, but in the meantime, the grass is growing and it has to be cut. So as I stated, this is a short-term contract, a short-term solution to a long-term problem. Because as you stated, this did not just start. This did not just start happening.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Foot and then Mr. Hartley.
My beef isn't with having the grass cut. I mean, I'm all for getting the grass cut in the cemeteries and everywhere else. My beef is with not putting it out for bid, which is what we should do in order to get the most, the best price, the best bang for our dollar. And I, this sort of last-minute, you've got to accept this or nothing else, is unacceptable way to run the city government.
It's not last-minute.
Yeah, it is.
Not for me. It's not last-minute.
Well, why didn't they put it out for bid six months ago?
Wait a minute, guys. Wait, y'all.
Anyway, that's just my opinion. You don't have to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, my comment is this. Last year, we went through extensive budgeting process, where folks came up and say, this is what it's going to take in order to maintain. And we all voted yes. Let's, let's maintain. I even asked that we use the grand gov funding to provide additional funding because of the severity of the problem. But once we go through that budget process, and the directors and administration says, yes, this will do it, yes, you approve for this amount, then we expect it to get done. No excuse, we just expect it to get done because what's the purpose of budget processes if it's not to come up and say, hey, this is what it's going to take in order to maintain our city? And then follow through on that. No excuse, just follow through. Get those number of people, get the, I mean, and we getting ready to come up on it again next month. We'll see director after director saying, hey, this is what it's going to need to take care of this issue.
Well, I cannot...
And I just want to see, okay, from beginning to the end, if you come up with a plan, do a budget, if you say, this is what we're going to need, then we expect you to follow through on that.
I can only assume that...
Thank you, Mr. Mr. I'm sorry.
I can only assume that that's directed at some, because I was not...
I can speak to that.
But Mr. Foot is next. Mr. Foot?
I was just going to correct one thing. PDT Logistics is not in South Jackson. It's headquartered in Ward One, 11 Dogwood Lane.
The owner is from South Jackson with Parks and High School.
Not true. Not true. PDT, PDT Logistics is one of many businesses that the owner that you're speaking of owns, he actually has a workforce development center, which is actually in South Jackson. So that that's not...
Their headquarters, it lists online.
Wait, 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 y'all, let's please don't, I know this is an emotional subject, but let's please try to not speak over one another.
Yeah, and I want to speak to the conversation in last budget season. The conversation in last budget season was actually about the management of the grass-cutting operations. And there was a decision to take it out of Parks and Rec and put it in the Solid Waste Division in hopes that Ms. Lakeisha Weathers could figure out a solution that would better fit. We didn't give her more money. We didn't give her more staff. We didn't give her more equipment. We just gave her the responsibility, and she said that she would do all that she could in order to resolve the issue. Ms. Weathers has been in conversation with us for several months in order to identify what is the best path forward. The reason that we don't have something out for bid is because this isn't the long-term solution. She's at the end of a budget season, and we're going to have conversations, just like we talked about yesterday, about what we do in-house and what we contract out. This is not a unique circumstance for the City of Jackson. In fact, the City of Flowood primarily contracts out its lawn-cutting services. Most of the cities around us now contract out their lawn-cutting services because they thought it was a better decision in order to do it that way, and that's what we're looking to do long-term. We'll get into that conversation about what it costs. Right now, we have residents who are complaining. Right now, the grass is high, and right now, you're looking a give horse in the mouth. It feels like sometimes two plus two equals cookie around here. I'm just trying to understand the math on this. She's trying to help us, and she's trying to provide a solution to this issue that we're talking about in public comment every single day. We're talking about this issue. She's telling you this is how, a solution. It's under $75,000. This is the way the city has done business forever. This isn't something unordinary, unusual. Legal has said that it is legally sufficient. You approve contracts under $75,000 that are not bid every single meeting. Every single meeting, you do this, right? And so this is just a solution in hand right now.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Brazil.
Call the question.
Okay, the question has been called. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, it passes with a vote of four to one. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to reconsider item number 13.
Madam President, I move that we reconsider item 13. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reconsider item number 13. All in favor? It passes with a vote of three to. Would the clerk please get it on the floor?
I think you still got to see where they go again.
Oh, I'm sorry, opposed. It's a vote of three to. All right, would the clerk please get it on the floor?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Redmond Lawn and Cleaning Service LLC for city right-of-way maintenance services.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and my comments remain the same. That is, when the administration brings us something at the first of the year, saying, this is our plan to get it done, then we shouldn't wait, we shouldn't have to wait 10 months later for those things to get done. I expect going into budget season, if you say, this is what it's going to take for solid waste to operate properly, to clean up our open dumps, this is the program, we hear these pitches every single year. I know changes can be made, but the people, the people, when we approve that budget, they're expecting that budget to be used to do, for those things that you said you were going to do. And I just have a problem with us waiting and not doing those things, not doing those daily maintenance things as you ask for at the beginning of the budget season. And then we wait, 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 and things aren't getting done while we've already, you've already told us your plan, you already told us your needs, we approved that stuff and things aren't getting done. And then we come up at the last minute and throw in, well, now it's an emergency, let's do it this way. I just have a problem with budget and what does it mean if it doesn't mean that you're going to follow through? That's what I have a problem with. And then to add insult to injury, you turn around and say, well, you don't want it done. No, I do want it done. I want it done the way you said you were going to do it at the very beginning of the season. Before Ms. Weathers came on, it was already being done by our Parks and Recs Division. And that was the plan. And again, I just have a problem with the way we follow through, because I'm like, why should I even attend a budget meetings if we're going to hear nonsense and you're not going to hold true to that? That's what I have a problem with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just want the clerk, if you would, let the record reflect that the solid waste manager did state that this was not an emergency and this did not happen at the last minute.
Not only that.
Mr. Mayor.
Briefly, to be clear, the administration, this wasn't the administration's plan. This was the administration's agreement. It was brought up through the council that they wanted to shift it to solid waste and we agreed to that because we were in hopes that it would be better management. We didn't make any promises that we were suddenly going to be able to create a miracle, but this wasn't our plan. The administration agreed with the recommendation, I believe it came from Councilman Banks, if I'm correct, is that right, Councilman Banks? That he thought it would be a better decision to move it out of Parks and Rec into solid waste because of the work that Ms. Weathers has been able to demonstrate, the acumen that she's been able to demonstrate in her work. We agreed to that. So there was no, there was no suggestion by the administration that this was the silver bullet. And so now, in her capacity, as having responsibility over this now, she is bringing forward a recommendation to you now and how it can be better maintained and managed going forward.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate.
Mr. Hartley.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But it was my understanding that it wasn't agreed initially to go to solid waste division. It was requested to go to Public Works, which you'd think right-of-waste would naturally fall under Public Works, because Parks and Recs, they have their own priorities. But it was agreed that it would go to Public Works. Solid Waste Division is the enterprise fund. That means they focus on the fee collection and that's what they do in order to do their job for collecting solid waste. That's it. They got a lot of responsibilities and they've been working hard to meet those responsibilities. And now we're simply asking them to do more and more things in an enterprise fund. I wanted it to go to Public Works. I was literally shocked when it was told it's going to go to the solid waste division.
Solid Waste is in Public Works.
I understand that. But this problem of right-of-wastes, drainages, other issues that are so prominent, I prefer it to be under its own division even, because it's so important, especially along the right-of-wastes, along the highways. I wanted it to have more and more of the, more and more notoriety. I wanted it to have its own path. We took it out of one department that had their own goals and their own mission, and we put it in another department with their own goals and their own primary mission. What we needed to do was put it to Public Works and establish it as a higher order of importance. And we stuck it in solid waste division, an enterprise fund. They get their money from the public to do public work, to do solid waste issues, collect garbage, to do the open dumping, to deal with the littering. And now we're putting that additional burden on the solid waste division. And now we're seeing, yeah, there are some issues. And I forecasted those, oh, we're going to have a problem here. But we move it to solid waste division. Why not have it under its own division? That was my question then and that's my question now, because this thing is just so important. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Banks?
Yes, the clerk will let the record reflect that solid waste is its own division and that it is in, that right-of-way cutting is in the Department of Public Works. With that, I call the question.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? I am 13, we're on 13. We're on 13. All in favor, I'm going to call it again, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's a vote of three to two. All right? All right, colleagues, we're moving on now to item 15 and we will come back to claims.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement one to the agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for Beasley, for the Beasley Road at Highland Drive Improvements Project.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Thank you. Item number 16.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, in support of the first Mayfair End of Summer Blast.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this one? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Madam President, I just want to say to my colleagues that the Mayfair subdivision is a very growing, largely growing subdivision. For those that don't know, it's in between Lake Shore, Terry and Forest Hill Road. It also busts against Brookley. And I am just extremely proud of Ms. Sharon Miller and this organization for organizing, because after one of our profound former baseball players wasn't able to lead, they, you know, haven't had a neighborhood association for four or five years and Sharon Miller stepped up. And I just applaud them for stepping up in South Jackson and beginning to do things to get the community involved. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Thank you. Item number 18, we've done 17.
Council President Lindsay, number 18 and 19 needs an amendment and our office is printing it, so can we move on to the next item and come back?
You got it? She got it.
Oh, wait, hold on, they have it. Start back there.
But we don't have it.
Right.
So I'm going to go on to, while you're passing those down, I'm going to go on to item number 20.
Order authorizing the mayor to submit a proposal for the Community Change Grant Track Two and to enter into a partnership agreement with the statutory partner, One Voice.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it's six zero. All right, now back to item number 18. Do we have those? I don't have. I think, could I get it first?
Yeah, give it to the president first.
Thank you. Does everyone have one, colleagues? Is there just, there's just one amendment? Yeah, it, so, wait. I only have, is there just one item? Oh, oh, thank you. All right, clerk, everybody, everybody have theirs now? All right, thank you. All right, well, clerk, would you please get item number 18 on the floor?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement and related documents with Blue Dot to provide local shopping incentive services in the city of Jackson, Mississippi for a period of one year and authorizing payment in the amount of $10,000 to Blue Dot.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item, so would you please go, yes, Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we amend this item to be replaced with the item provided by legal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend this item to replace it with the item that was provided to us by legal. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we have a vote of five to one to accept, to amend the item. Could you just explain to us just a little bit? I know we had a special planning meeting about it yesterday, but could you just explain a little bit about what this is?
So this item, I'm sorry, ECA Hoover Economic Development, this item is rewards incentive to incentivize consumers in Jackson to spend and shop at local Jackson businesses.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote of five to one. Thank you. We're moving on now to item number 19.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Blue Dot to implement an online business directory for a period of one year and to authorize payment in the amount of $2,940 to Blue Dot.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we amend this item to be replaced with the item provided by legal.
Second. We have a second, we have two seconds and you got one, okay. All right, so all in favor? Opposed? Okay, so we have a vote of five to one on accepting the amendment. All right, we now have the item before us as amended. Any questions or comments, colleagues? We also discussed this in the planning committee meeting yesterday. Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote of five to one. Thank you very much. All right, now, colleagues, we've got to go back to claims. Would the clerk please get claims on the floor?
Order approving claims appearing at pages 152, two-inclusive thereof, on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $2,570,502.29 for making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second on claims. Now, somebody come up here and explain to us exactly what it is that we, you know, are doing and why we had to go back to claims again, so everybody understands it. And then also, who's going to do larger claims?
I'll do it in the absence of anybody.
All right. And you're doing larger claims? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so we needed claims to be amended to include the invoices by Mr. Pierre. And these invoices have been provided to you in the packet that was later given to you. I think we have one for $4,940, two for $4,940, one for $4,680, one for $3,900 and one for
Thank you. Does everyone have this? Okay, Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we amend claims for result biz with the invoices received for a total of $22,100.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend claims to allow for these items. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote of five to one. All right, now we have claims before us as amended, unless there is something else. Is there anything else? All right, we have claims before us. Mr. Wright, would you please go over larger claims?
Sure. Louis Wright, CAO. The larger claims are MV Contract Transportation, Inc. This is coming out of Planning and Development for J-Trans. It is in the amount of $458,187.06. And this will be paid out of Fund 187 Transportation. This is for May 2024 fixed rate services or fixed route services. The other one is GCHP Midtown LP out of Planning and Development in the amount of $445,826.32. This is GHSCP Midtown, April 1, 2024 through April 30 of 2024. And this will be paid out of Fund 120 Home Program Fund. The other larger claim is MV Contract Transportation, Inc. Planning and Development. It is in the amount of $255,238,000, I'm sorry, $255,238.074. This is May 2024 pair of transit services, Fund 187 Transportation. And the final larger claim is GCHP Midtown LP out of Planning and Development in the amount of $216,303.43. This is GHCP Midtown, March 1, 2024 through March 31 of 2024. And this is out of Fund 120 Home Program Fund. And that concludes larger claims.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments about claims? Everybody okay? All right, all in favor? Opposed? It's just a vote of four to two. Thank you. All right, now, colleagues, we're going to go on now to the discussion items. Item number 21, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I had a constituent, again, bring up this issue. It's something really important and I wanted to find out what is the status of our, and I think Mr. Wright may have given an important answer yesterday concerning intersections, lines being directional, lines being put on our intersections, dirt being removed from the intersections, potholes being removed from the intersection. And I think I was specifically talking about Lynch Street and Bobby Rush Boulevard. I noticed on here you have Ellis Avenue, but it's Bobby Rush Boulevard now. And I think Mr. Rush, excuse me, Mr. Louis, Louis Wright, said that there will be progress within the next few weeks. Is that?
That's correct.
Can you explain a little bit more and maybe how our traffic division is doing as far as getting directional lines painted?
Sure. You're referring to discussion item 21, the Lynch Street and Ellis Avenue intersection.
Bobby Rush Boulevard.
Okay, Bobby Rush Boulevard, all right. Let me talk first about Lynch Street and Ellis. The work. Yeah, I'm sorry. Lynch Street and Bobby Rush. All right. At that intersection, we are working out the traffic control plan to get the work started. We're going to have to close off part of Bobby Rush or Lynch Street in order to do that work. So we're working those plans out now. We should have that worked out within the next week or so and we'll start the work in that area. In terms of placing the signs for Bobby Rush along the former Ellis Avenue corridor, that work is in the process of being done with the bucket truck and there were some problems with the truck. I think we have those worked out, so as soon as we get them all completed, we'll start that process of replacing those Ellis Avenue signs to Bobby Rush Avenue sign. Did I get it right?
Bobby Rush Boulevard.
Bobby Rush Boulevard.
And we appreciate everything you're doing there with the signs and that's, that intersection is just so important. At the end of the day, I mean, you have traffic coming there, going back and forth from Jackson State University. And so it's really important that we get that intersection right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
We realize that and hopefully this work will be completed by the time, you know, schools start and the students start coming in off of 220 onto Lynch Street and going through that intersection.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Is that, does that conclude your session?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, number, item 22, Mr. Banks, Convention Center.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just two things on that. One, usually what happens and hopefully we can prevent from this to happen is it's not to after-budget season where we sometimes will hear from the convention center on what their needs may be. If we can get mayor some insight on what that would be beforehand or as we get ready to go into budget season. The second thing is if legal can get with the, if the city attorney's office can get with the attorneys with the convention center, just to ensure, because I know it's been some time now, we've had some delay with our audit, to see where they are with their audit, even though we've asked for some grace, they are still responsible for providing that audit to us. And, you know, it's been some months now and, you know, if they could provide that to the council as soon as possible.
Councilwoman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
I had a very brief, only because it was in passing, conversation with Ricky Thicpen. He shared that he had had some preliminary conversation with you two. So we talked about putting a meeting on the calendar and so we will do it as soon as, as soon as we ascertain what their ask will be and then we'll certainly present it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything else on that, Mr. Banks? Thank you for bringing that up. All right, we've done 20, the next one, item 23, 24, demolition of Hotel O, Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Madam President. The, this is, you know, obviously, everybody knows about Hotel O, it's been covered on the news and we see, drive by it all the time on I-55. It's a very serious health hazard because it's open, it's burned out, it's got lots of debris and stuff around it. It attracts vagrants and squatters and other people like that. It's a health hazard to them. And we, the judge, Judge Reynolds, Jeff Reynolds, has come out and said, you know, told us it needs to be torn down. And so my question is, what is our pathway to get from where we are to the hotel being torn down? I know there's challenges, legal challenges, funding challenges, but if we can provide some information to me and also to the public on, you know, what the process is for us to get from where it is right now to being torn down?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. So I provided an update to Judge Reynolds last night, consistent with his earlier order. What I told him was that we're still waiting for specific numbers. What I told him was that we're still waiting for specific numbers from finance and from City Council in terms of what kind of timeframe we can give him, in terms of when the money is available to demolish the hotel. I know that there is talk about making sure that is allocated in next year's budget. If the money is available before that, then certainly we would be able to move forward before that. We also requested a status conference so we could discuss with him some of the legal issues that remain because of the case still being on appeal. Right now, it's appealed into the Heinz County Circuit Court, which, as I mentioned before, could create some jurisdictional complications, but we're hoping to get some clarity from him on that by meeting with him directly.
So, if we were to come up with some outside funding from outside foundations or whatever, the, because people have approached me about that, but I don't know what the, what kind of response to give them because of the uncertainty to me of the legal situation. So in other words, if there's an appeal, we have to wait till the appeal works out, and how long will that take? Might be another six months, two months, or what?
So, do you wanna go first? No, 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 you can. So, I would say this, if there is outside money available, my answer would be, let's get it, because I expect that we will be able to move forward with the demolition. I can't give a specific timeframe, I wish I could. I think Judge Reynolds will tell us, I don't wanna speak for any court or any judge, but I think Judge Reynolds will tell us that he believes we can move forward. We just need to make sure that we're not in conflict with the jurisdiction of the appellate court. The circuit court appeal should not take, I don't expect it would take six months. Frankly, the initial appeal to county court, we moved for it to be dismissed because there were errors with the way the appeal was filed in the first place. Judge McDaniel on the county court ultimately agreed with us and dismissed the appeal. I think that ruling will stand, but I can't say that it would take 30 days, 60 days, or six months, I just, I just don't know that for certain. I hope we'll get some clarity after we have the status conference with Judge Reynolds, and I'll certainly provide an update when that happens.
Well, then, I guess my understanding from what you said is that, and tell me if I'm wrong about this. That it really comes down to the situation with the appeal from the owner, and even though the Judge Reynolds has told us to tear it down, we have to wait on the appeal process, which court system is that in?
So it started in environmental court, the appeal from that was to county court, the appeal from county court is to circuit court, and that's where it is now, is circuit court.
It is circuit court, so we have to wait, so the people have approached me with money to do this, I'm not gonna take, we'll take the money, and I can't tell you when it's gonna be available to, until any action will take place.
Well, I'll leave that up to the donors that you're speaking with to decide. I would suggest that, that the money, I believe there would be a way to get the money, safeguard it, and keep it for the purpose that it's intended, regardless of when that is. The answer to your question about, do we have to wait, I can't say that with certainty, although I suspect that's gonna be the case, that we have to wait for the appeals to run, but that's why we've requested the status conference to try to get some clarity on that issue. If we can move forward immediately, I know that that's the desire of the administration and of the council, and we're pushing for that to happen.
So what, who's the judge?
Judge Reynolds in municipal court.
No, I know Judge Reynolds, but who's at that circuit court?
I honestly don't recall which judge it was assigned to, I can get that for you today.
If you'll let me know about that.
Sure, sure, can certainly do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Just briefly, I just wanna assure you, Councilman Foot, that it isn't a concern of ours, it's a concern of all of ours, and the city has done its job on this one. We merely have to wait on the court process. It went through, it was filed with environmental court, we got a ruling on it, as he stated, it was appealed, and it's been appealed again, and we're just unable to move forward. While we certainly are always in need of money, so I would say that in terms of shortening that runway of how we get it knocked down, if people are ready to donate, we should get that money in now so that we don't wait on a ruling and then get the money in after that, so we're ready to move if there are people who are ready to donate towards it. And I guess I want you to verify that it's okay, that we can.
Well, what I need to be able to tell people is, it's not the city's fault, it's the circuit court.
Well, I wouldn't say it's their fault.
And I like to tell their job. I like to know why it's still standing. My question is, why is it still standing?
The answer to your question is.
What I wanna be able to tell them is, you know, we're doing everything we can, it's in judge, whoever it is at the circuit court, that needs, the ball's in his court, literally.
Well, certainly the process, that's where the, that's where the process is right now, and there's nothing the city can do that it has not done, I can say that. I will say one other thing that we've done, and I included this in my report to Judge Reynolds, we have gotten quotes on fencing the area, putting up barriers to help the police do their job with it, and to prevent, as best we can, people from coming in and causing more problems, and I expect that he will authorize us to do that, and I don't think we'll have to wait on that. I think he will tell us that we can do that and we can move. And I expect that he'll give us a date for a status conference that will be probably next week, would be my guess. He'll give it to us pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank everyone for their hard work on that particular eyesore and just horror in our city. Okay, the next item is number 25, and it's a follow-up on redistricting. We did have a discussion about it yesterday afternoon. Colleagues, I don't see any reason to go into executive session today, I'm just gonna ask you to keep mindful that, you know, there is the possibility of some litigation involving this, and so just to be careful in what we say and try not to mention names or anything of that nature. But I asked Mr. Banks to join me this morning on a phone call with CMPDD, because he already had those relationships and had done all this work, and so, Mr. Banks, join in if I don't get this right, but very quickly. CMPDD has graciously agreed at no additional cost to the city to do another meeting so we can revisit the lines again and make sure that we're, you know, we can come a little closer to agreeing to maybe two instead of four options, so we can get closer to being able to reach some sort of consensus about where we are with our lines. I am going to reach back out this afternoon to the mediator, have an additional conversation with him, and urge him to quickly resolve his conflicts. If he cannot, we're gonna need to move on to somebody else, because as it was said to us yesterday afternoon by our city clerk, we really don't have much time if we're going to get this done. And at this time, colleagues, I would invite any of you, if you have any additional questions of our city clerk, she is prepared to enlighten us a little bit more if there's still some unanswered questions. Mr. Martin, did you have anything you needed to add to this? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I would like just, if the clerk can briefly come up and just, again, make us aware of the timeline, and then I also think it's important that even after we approve this, there is an additional vote that this body will have to take with the county, and if she could also clarify all of that.
Angela Harris, Municipal Clerk. Yes, so, like, as I stated yesterday, my recommendation is for the council to make a decision and provide me with that information, no later than August the 30th, that's on a Friday, because the first is on a Sunday, the second is Labor Day, and so I can get the information to the circuit clerk, so he can be able to let us know how much he's gonna charge, so we can draft the order and the contract to bring it back before the council to vote on it before he commits to do any work. And so anytime that you contract with somebody to do a work, they need to verify what they're doing before they put it into the SIM system. So him and his team, based upon the address ranges that's gonna be provided after the lines are drawn, they're gonna have to go out throughout the city to verify indeed that these are the correct address ranges before they input that information into the statewide election management system. So be mindful that they are shutting the system down in October, so even if he do start the work, the leg work, that's good, even if he can't input the information in until after the election, he would have all that information verified, and then once the system opens back up for him to input that information, then we can go ahead with notifying residents, especially with the qualifying period coming up, if any council members that lines may be affected, you know, they would have to make that decision about which ward that they would run in, because, you know, it could be affected. Their addresses could be moved, and they could be changed to a different ward.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, during the public hearing that we had on redistricting, Madam President, one of the things that kept coming back up was two things. One was a need for information, and another one was for us to give them more time to process that information. Those were two consistent things, and I just wanted to know, are we prepared to share additional information at this time, or to tell the, you know, to tell the public of our final deadline?
Well, what we will do, Mr. Hartley, as we've done all the other previous meetings, they will be open to the public.
Okay.
And they will all be open to the public, we will make sure the media is included, and the media's been very responsive in helping spread the word about our redistricting meetings, and they've attended them. We certainly will have all that information on our website, you know, and we probably will, you know, I would consider sending some letters, I will consider sending some letters up to a few groups as well.
You mentioned they're gonna be open to the public.
They're open, as before.
Well, the first couple of times we met with CMPDD, the public didn't have any input, wasn't allowed to speak, and I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if the public will have.
Will there be another public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna, we will, we will discuss that with the mediator and see what he recommends. So, anything else on that? Any questions? All right, colleagues, I think we have actually come to the end of this meeting. Any, anybody have any announcements? Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one, we're having Ward Five Day over at Livingston Park Zoo this coming Saturday, and we'd love to publicly come out, participate, enjoy the amenities of the zoo area and Livingston Park, where there'll be free food, there'll be music, there'll be activities for the children, so we're especially interested in folks coming out, especially my Ward Five folks, come out, have a good time, and celebrate the neighborhoods and celebrate each other in Ward Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any others? All right, is there absolutely anything else to come before us right this minute? All right, if not, this meeting is adjourned.